Board of Trustees regular meeting is now called to order at four thirty-two P M. We welcome members of the public. Instructions on making public comment are posted in item one of the agenda, and we will ask at each item if there is public comment. Catherine, will you please do roll call?
Uh, yes, um, trustee Kishna.
Here.
Trustee Rios.
Here.
Trustee Baker.
Here.
And we have Jenny Olson currently absent. She should be joining when we come back from closed session. Also, Inez Deluna, they're both at a conference. Uh, we'll be joining, and Kyle Iverson is not here. We expect him, though. Oh, and student trustee, uh, Alejandro Martinez will not be present tonight.
Okay, thank you, guys. And we do have a corn. And, uh, trustee daughter is here as well. And that was just assuming she was gonna do it. And I said, move the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, what we should say. One nation, under God, in this world.
As we gather today, it is important to acknowledge that Napa Valley College and the surrounding Napa Valley sit on the unceded, traditional ancestral and contemporary homelands of the Miwok patwin who are composed of three federally recognized tribes, the Kachaldehi Band of Winton Indians of the Kalusa Indian Community, the Kletzeldehi Band of Winton Indians, and the Yocha Dehe Band of Winton Nation, and Wapo, including the Mishewa Wapo, also known as the Onastis Peoples. As part of the college's mission of preparing students for evolving roles in a diverse, dynamic, and interdependent world, and in accordance with the college's values of honesty, integrity, inclusivity, and respect for others, we make this acknowledgement. We also affirm that this acknowledgement is insufficient. It does not undo the harm that has been and continues to be perpetuated against indigenous people, the land, and water. May we hold steady in our commitment to be in solidarity and in action to seek equity and justice within Miwok, Patwin, and Wapo's peoples. For the record, trustee Iverson, just to, just announce it to everybody. Good to see you, trustee Iverson. Uh, we'll move to adoption of the agenda. I have a few changes, but do trustees have any changes to the agenda? We will pull four point three and four point four, uh, public employment items. We're also pulling nine point three. Uh, employment agreements. And then I'm gonna add twelve point two, uh, construction management services contract award to our consent calendar. Are there any other changes or any comments on those changes? Seeing none, we'll adopt the agenda by consensus and move on to public comment on closed session items. The board will devote up to fifteen minutes to hear comments regarding closed session items. Individual comments will be limited to three minutes. Do we have any public comment on closed session items? I haven't received anything.
We do not.
And thank you. At this time, the board will move into closed session covering Conference with Labor Negotiators, uh, public employment item, and public employee performance evaluation, and will return on or about five-thirty P M. Good evening, the board has returned from closed session at five-thirty-three P M. Uh, board has one announcement to read out from, um, closed session. The board approved the following appointment to a full-time, temporary, at-will classified administrative assignment. Uh, may I vote as acting director, financial aid from December one through December thirty-one, twenty-twenty-three, or until that position is filled on a regular basis, whichever occurs first. Acting director salary will be based on admin confidential salaries. Schedule range nineteen, step D, plus longevity increments one and two at ten thousand one hundred forty-three dollars a month. This bow will also receive a monthly stipend of ten percent of admin confidential salary. Schedule range seventeen, step C, plus longevity increments one and two at nine hundred sixty-six dollars a month from December one through December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three, or until the director position is filled on a regular basis, whichever occurs first for retaining, uh, her assistant director and financial aid duties. Salary and stipend will be rated for any month or some month of service. And then let's let the record reflect that trustee Olson and trustee Deluna are in the room remotely. Good evening, trustees. Thank you for joining us. Have we done a test? Can they, uh, I see hands wave, so I think they can hear us. And then in light of the wonderful crowd that we have tonight, um, I'd ask trustees if it's okay that we, perhaps rearrange, amend our agenda, um, to move items nine point one and item nine point two. Um, before, I think it's fine, before we do public comment. Are there any concerns, Gina? If you've seen none, then we will move. Any concerns on that for the crowd? Moving, uh, Gina, item nine point one, nine point two earlier. Okay, seeing none. We will begin with, uh, nine point one, Napa Valley, uh, College District Initial Proposal with, uh, College Union of Classified Professionals. That item was posted on nine point one. It is just an information item, and then we will go to nine point two, Napa Valley College Union of Classified Professionals Initial Proposal. This is an information item, but will open up for public comment. If there's any discussion on this item from the crowd.
Good evening. To begin, we extend a warm invitation to our classified professionals attending today's meeting. Similarly, we would like to express our appreciation to the classified professionals joining us through virtual space of Zoom. Your presence is equally significant. Today, S C I U Local Ten Twenty-One.
And I'm so sorry to interrupt you. Would you mind, uh, saying your name for, for the record?
Renee Coffin.
Thank you.
Union Secretary.
Sorry to interrupt you.
So today, S C I U Local Ten Twenty-One, along with the Classified Executive Board, the Bargaining Team, and the Contract Action Team are united and drawing attention and spotlighting Agenda Item Nine Point Two, Napa Valley College Union of Classified Professionals Initial Proposal. The proposal before us is not arbitrary. It is the result of thoughtful deliberations, heartfelt intentionality, and it reflects our commitment to inclusivity. We held two comprehensive listening sessions and engaged in one-to-one discussions with our classified professionals, ensuring that every voice was considered and valued. We acknowledge the substantial transformations our college has weathered in the last few years, enduring, including enduring a global pandemic, navigating financial challenges, and the departure of long-serving staff, which led to a significant loss of institutional knowledge and expertise. We've contended with the hiring freeze and the technological setbacks that included the loss of historical data and procedures. The administrative reorganization this past summer and the anticipation of the new campus housing next year are also among other challenges that have further transformed and reshaped our environment. These profound events have prompted considerable shifts at the classified level. Many staff members continue to shoulder multiple roles, continue taking on added responsibilities, and continue managing increased workloads. It has never been more apparent that our, as an institution, we have an obligation, not just an opportunity, but a profound responsibility to improve and enhance the working conditions of our classified professionals. These dedicated individuals you see here today form the backbone of our institution and our frontline services, directly shaping the experiences of our students and serving pillars of our community. It is with genuine spirit of collaboration that our bargaining team enters negotiations grounded in a commitment to fairness, equity, and in good faith. We trust the district will approach these, these discussions with the same integrity. As we conclude, to our diligent health classified professionals, please note that your executive board sees and deeply appreciates your extensive efforts. We resonate with your concerns, which have been expressed with great emphasis. We commend you for your presence at this meeting and for the solidarity you accept it. Sincerely, S C I U Local Ten Twenty-One, Classified Professionals Union Executive Team, the Bargaining Team, and our Contract Action Team. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the thoughtful and insightful comments, and everyone being here is very helpful. And thank you to the entire team. So we will move on to, uh, public comment and, um, which are item six. Uh, public comment is governed by the California Brown Act. By definition, this is an opportunity to hear concerns, perspectives, and differing vantage points. The board is not able, under the Brown Act, to engage in a level of discussion, but we look forward to this opportunity to gather, uh, public input. At this time, the board will devote up to fifteen minutes to review comment to the board on any subject item not appearing on tonight's agenda, but over which the board has jurisdiction. No action or discussion will occur at this time on such items, and comments will be limited to three minutes. Catherine, we have, uh, I have one comment listed for our comment card from Ms. Coffin, who has already spoken.
Yeah, that's done, and I have no other public comment.
Anybody wants to say hi or, uh? Okay, I haven't received any public comment either. Is there anything in, in Zoom, Zoomlandia? Can you raise hands? Okay. Then we will move to item seven, uh, which is our consent calendar. And thank you again for everyone for being here. It, it, it does really make a difference. Approval or consent counter, is there any questions, uh, from consent? Is there any public comment on our consent calendar? No, I see kind of shaking her head. Why would welcome a motion for approval?
Of approval.
Thank you, trustee Baker, for your motion, and trustee Rios for your second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you, trustee Olson Deluna, for your, uh, yes, that's, uh, consent counter is approved unanimously. We will move to eight point one, our mission, vision, and values statements.
Good evening, board. Um, my name still is Amanda Baggett. I teach art history here at Napa Valley College, but this evening I'm before you, along with my esteemed admin co-chair. We represent the planning committee here at the college, and together we are bringing you the latest, and I think fairly greatest my, um, version of the mission, vision, values. Uh, as I outlined for you last month, and I won't repeat myself, this has been through a fairly thorough, um, series of workshops, forums, and not to mention the considerable work of the planning committee itself. And we have now brought you, there is some difference. Um, Catherine, if you can scroll down a little bit, from the last version there in the highlight, uh, we have added a value of sustainability. This was initiated, um, at the Administrative Senate, and then was endorsed by the Planning Committee. And then we have also, because there was some feedback about the footnotes, we have now included the footnotes so that it is a complete package. We are happy to entertain questions or if you.
Any published comment? Tim, this is a, a second reading, so it does, it is an action item. Uh, any questions or comments from the board? Thank you, trustee Baker.
I had a, a, just a thought, actually. I guess it's a question, um, and not so much about this, but about our, um, land acknowledgement. I've had the pleasure of hearing it twice today, and, uh, it just occurred to me on hearing it the second time that it references our current mission. So are we planning to revisit that?
I would imagine so, yes. That doesn't live with the planning committee, but I would imagine at some point.
Yes, we've already had discussions on the need to, to revisit in light of this, the revised values. Yes.
But we're just awaiting the formal adoption of these by you all. Move on to that.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll move to that.
There's a, a motion from trustee Baker and a second from trustee Iverson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Approved unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your hard work. Made it seem easy up here, but we know it's not, not, not that easy to get here. Uh, we have covered, um, item nine, uh, which we did before public comment. And we'll go to item ten point one, our Outreach Action Plan. Uh, ask Dean Jessica Erickson. She wants to step up. She's gonna guide us through this plan that we put together.
Good evening, board. Um, thank you for having me here. Um, this is really the work of both Dr. G and I, as well as a whole team of other individuals in the SEM team that helped review it and provide comments, as well as our, our action, um, team as well, outreach action team. So I'm gonna provide you with a general outreach action plan overview. So if you'll, thank you, rotate right to the challenges facing Napa Valley College outreach. So part of the impetus for, and this is just a selection of reasons, but certainly not inclusive of all the reasons, um, and challenges that are facing outreach that have really required us to put together a really, um, clear plan for how we are going to be implementing outreach here at Napa Valley College. Um, a low yield rate, so forty-one percent of all of our fall applicants registered for fall classes. We know that could be higher, so we'd like to increase that. Limited staffing, our enrollment services staffing is down forty, forty percent from two years ago. And then there's been somewhat lack of coordination as a result of the re, the reduced staffing and outreach coordination has been siloed and less effective, as well as higher demand. So cert, serving students equitably requires more intentional and personalized support. So we're really looking at, at reinventing how we do outreach for our community. The source of, of some of these changes that we've, that we've engaged in is the work that was done through our acro report, which was an enrollment barriers report. And so a lot of what you're gonna see in this is evidence of the work that was done in that. And, and this is sort of an example of, um, or you will see in this action plan, evidence of the work we've done, I should say, to meet those, those recommendations from the outreach, um, excuse me, the enrollment barriers, uh, assessment. And part of it was to define the difference. There was a real clarity, there was a, a confusion that the outreach task force had, and maybe campus at large, with definitions about some basic fundamentals of our outreach, which is the definition of outreach versus recruitment versus onboarding. There are a lot of different components to each of these. And the action plan that you have also attached, um, to this, uh, presentation really gives a lot more detail. This is, I'm giving you kind of the overview, but outreach is really increasing a broad community awareness of college programs and resources. Recruitment is the developing of an intentional, of intentional activities for prospective students around career exploration and application with the intent, with attention to populations of students who have been historically underserved. And onboarding, providing equitable enrollment-related activities to guide students through the steps to enroll. So this, defining these terms for us as a college was part of what the recommendations were, and really a way for us to, as a group, and we've been, since we had those recommendations, we've been working on defining them. Um, we also defined the mission, vision, and purpose of outreach, recruitment, and onboarding. And a lot of this is based on, since it's our twenty-three, twenty-four plan, a lot of this is based on the work of our task force. Again, influenced by the barriers, but, but the work of the actual original task force. So the mission, um, is the Napa Valley College uses student-centered, equity-focused, and community-oriented outreach strategies to provide meaningful outreach, recruitment, and onboarding events and activities to transform lives, whether the student's goal is to transfer, pursue a career, or explore interests. Our vision is to motivate students to join the Napa Valley College family by welcoming and admitting a diverse student population that is reflective of the community we proudly serve. And our purpose of the outreach at Napa Valley College is to promote the college through a coordinated outreach experience that prospective students will know that N V C is a key step to advance their educational and career goals. Outreach and recruitment efforts will increase awareness and access to resources that support student success and foster a successful transition to Napa Valley College. So you can see the influence of other mission, vision, values, and other of our, of our very important pillars of work that have happened across campus. So I really want to focus most of this on the actual action plan goals so that it's really targeting, aligned with our SEM plan. These are the three goals that support the SEM plan, as well as outreach activities that, that both we've currently engaged in, and that also we are, um, we will continue to engage in, perhaps in different ways as we learn more, as we collect more data, because that's part of what, what this plan will allow us to do. So goal one is to target high school students who will matriculate into certificates and degrees. So through our dual enrollment, through other, other capacities. And, and when I, when you look at our outreach action plan, you will see very specifically under each goal, the different activities and the areas of responsibility, and the targets that we have, the assessments. And we'll go over that one by one, um, later in the presentation. Goal two is to target students who enroll in transfer programs. Transfer is actually two of our SEM goals, and a, a focus of two of our SEM goals. And so we really want our action, our outreach action to really highlight and target students that plan to transfer. And really, we want to be able to look, find them in our high schools and in our community and help them get to a transfer program offered at the college and then transferred over to a, a, uh, four-year institution. We also target, uh, goal three is to target adult learners who will enroll in credit and non-credit programs. Again, aligning with our SEM goals of adult learners really has not been a focus of us for a very long time. And, and really, we've, in recognition of that, and in recognition of, of all of the, um, the efforts that we are currently putting in place with our dual enrollment, we want to equally put efforts into our, uh, approaching our adult learners beyond adult education. It's really looking out into our communities and populations that we, we perhaps have not, um, been as present and really looking at. And you'll see that in the calendar of activities, you'll see when, and it's an ongoing calendar of activities. Um, it shows the activities that we've committed to for this year, but it also is open to the future of adding new activities as the community creates an activity, or as the college creates an activity that we would allow, that would allow us to, um, attract students and share information about Napa Valley College. Next slide, please. So I wanted to point out, I said it in words, but I wanted to point it out, actually, uh, a little more directly, the link to the work that we're doing in the, in the Strategic Enrollment Management Team, because that's some very important work. We've made a lot of progress, and I really, in this work that I've been doing with Dr. Guerrero on the action plan, I really wanted to tie it to the work that, that Doug and I are doing and other, the team of others with the Strategic Enrollment Management Team. And that is, the, the SEM goal one is to increase the number of high school students who matriculate into certificates and degrees, so very much aligned, because it's very much similar. Um, but you'll notice the activities are different because they're specifically targeted to the outreach activities we'll engage in. Increase enrollment in degree prog, programs with a transfer focus. Again, alignment to SEM goal two, um, with a, alignment with our, with our outreach action plan goal. Increase adult learners twenty-five years or older, um, in enrolled and credit programs, aligned with SEM goal three. Our increase enrollment, or the goal is to increase enrollment in non-credit classes, which is our SEM goal six, um, which, just to remind you, I know we did share, Doug and I shared with you not so long ago, the work that we've done on the Strategic Enrollment Management Plan, um, that the work that we did with SEM aligned with our institutional strategic plan, which I know is, is in revision, as well as our student equity plan. And you will see when you click into the links that we've given you in the, um, in the plan, the act, the outreach action plan, the link to our SEM plan will show you a lot of alignment directly in the strategies and the tactics with our, with our equity planning. And one of those top items, Dr. Munzami has been very active with us in talking about how we will implement some of these and how we can partner with the D E I Committee, as well as the SEM Committee, to really look at how, how that will happen. So that, that's sharing with you the alignment with SEM, because we feel that's really important to show. In the future, uh, the Outreach Action Plan will live with the Outreach Action Team, which is under the umbrella of our Strategic Enrollment Management Committee. So it's now has a very much more of a district structure. Rather than before, it was a Student Affairs, uh, Task Force that was quite independent and did not really report into a district committee. And I think that's the most significant change with now the Outreach Action Team. It fits within Strategic Enrollment Management, so it's all very aligned. So future versions of this plan, um, will be much more influenced by the current Outreach Action Team versus the former. So this is, you're seeing the plan in sort of transition. So I will expect that future plans will be even more robust and will also include all of the learning that we've experienced in this, in this year, um, in the future. So Outreach Action Plan Goals and Equity Alignment, it's very critical. And then this is a general statement that, that really clearly identifies our targets. Um, Outreach Recruitment and Onboarding Activities will incorporate targeted attention to historically underserved prospective students identified in the Student Equity Plan, our Black, African-American, and American Indian, Alaska Native Communities, and Latinx, Philippine X, and other low-income students identified in our H S I Grants to ensure equitable access and support. So it's really aligning with all of the other initiatives on our campus so that it's incorporated in the outreach that we're doing. So we're very intentional about the outreach that we're doing. So moving on to the next slide, hopefully I'm okay for time. Um, Outreach Action Plan Goal One is, as I had mentioned before, target high school students who will matriculate into certificates and, and degrees. And the target assessment that we're gonna start with is looking at the high school participation in X, N V C's exploration days. We want that to be at least three hundred students annually, so for the duration of our, of our plan. We've already, I could say, we've already had one event where we had sixty students. Was, it was very successful. They came, they learned about our programs, they took a tour. And, um, so we're very excited. We're on our way to meeting that three hundred goal. We have a lot more planned for the spring. Um, and we, we plan to continue to develop the N V C Exploration Days as a really key, um, mechanism for increasing, uh, awareness to our high school students. This is a very high school student, um, focused event, uh, that we are. Yeah, we're, we're really, um, doing a lot to, um, each time, because this is now the third one we've done this last time that we, that we, last month, and I don't have the date on the top of my head, but, um, it, it will just continue to get better and better. And each time we do this, we learn more. Dr. G has been very, very much a part of all of these activities. Brenda in our Welcome Center has helped coordinate them. Christine Tapia has helped with great participation in there. And I feel that it's, it's becoming, uh, a really great event for our campus, and I'm really excited about it. In addition, so N V C Exploration Days is a very successful, um, uh, activity in that we are able to incorporate an outreach action in our outreach, Outreach Action Plan Goal Two, to target students who enroll in transfer programs. So this is very intentional work around incorporating transfer information into all the N V C Exploration Day events. That goes beyond that, and actually, I was going to, um, complement the presentation of our Counseling Department today in the, in the information to our high school, at our high school breakfast, who highlighted our transfer programs. So we have a very high transfer rate here at Napa Valley College that we're all very, very proud of. And so increasing that number. And so increasing that number, just our intentionality around students that wish to transfer is, is, is going to be and will continue to be a focus as we share information about our, our college and, and in this exploration days so students can explore. Outreach action plan goal three is to target adult learners who will enroll in credit and non-credit programs. So this is where our target assessment has more to do with the actual outreach events that we're attending. So in the calendar, you'll see there are a number of events that we've committed to participating in. There can be circumstances that mean we're not able to participate, but our plan, our strategy is that we will be participating in all of the events that are on that, on our, our calendar. And that we want our target assessment is to ensure that we have an average of at least 25 prospective student contacts from each of the outreach events that we attend. So that's our target. We may adjust that in the future. This is, we, we have not historically done a lot of this targeting and data collecting. And, and this is a huge shift in how we're doing outreach. And I'm very excited about it because it really gives us an opportunity to celebrate our achievements, to celebrate. It gives us something quantitative that we can look to and say, oh, we did even better. We had 60 out of that last event or we had, you know, shoot, we had 10. Is that really an event that we were gonna, we're gonna yield enough contact? But maybe it is because there's more than just the number that we're going to be looking at. We're going to be looking at a very qualitative approach.
What kind of events are you thinking about?
So, so some of the events, so they're all listed in, in the, in the calendar, but some of the events would be, gosh, I wish I actually had pulled it up. Does, do you, do you have that in, in the, is it in this? It is. Actually, if you want to pull that up, thank you. I was going to print out a copy and bring it with me, but so if you, it's actually in the, in the other.
Some examples are like the career fairs that we, we attend with our, our partners, either on campus or off campus. Our transfer days that we, that we have. I mean, just even as far as some of the events we've done, like our mariachi festival and connecting with folks there to connect them back to Napa Valley College. All these activities and events that we're doing are very intentional, strategic to see if we can really get those, those learners who are a little bit older or perhaps just not the average high school graduate coming into Napa Valley College. So doing enrollment and really thinking about working with, with our, like our, our adult education programs and whatnot is another way that we're doing some of that work.
I guess I was just kind of thinking, how are you defining, because when you're 18, right, we're adults past 18. So are you distinguishing between adult learners versus, you know, students that are?
So for, so that's a, that's a good question.
And goal three, a lot of those are more, seems like more student, limited student focused, I guess, career fairs, but any event.
We're, we're looking at adult learners as being age, it's from, based on our SEM, 25 years or older. So if they're under 25, we would look at them as they could be graduates, but, but that's not what we would necessarily be targeting in terms of, of, of an age cutoff, knowing that a lot of students 25 and under may still, may still be completing a high school diploma. There could be reasons why. But the 25 was, was, was a, was a cutoff that we had selected at the SEM.
That's helpful. Thank you.
If you want to go down to our, our calendar as well.
Sorry.
I just was thinking about another, do the high schools have events that we're invited to? Like during senior year when they're doing planning and, you know?
Yes.
Yes.
SATs, like do we get invited to that stuff or?
Yeah, it's a lot of the work that we've been doing in really being active with our, our high school partners. It's, it's two ways, right? So for us to, to build that bridge for them to come to NBC, literally bring students here through exploration days and other activities, but also for us to be having a presence on their campus for their events. So we get invites frequently to participate in their, either their college fairs or their, their days that they may, may have. And we do have a pretty strong presence that, that goes out to that. So part of this, this plan is to kind of align all of that so that we make sure that we're very strategic and intentional about going out into the community. So we know NBC will have a presence at this event. Everybody's on the same page and we do it really to make that, that deeper impact. So yes, absolutely.
And part of the reason it doesn't show up here is that we don't, we don't plan those events. And so we don't really want to put a commitment that we're, we will commit to attending. But I, I do, hearing that comment, I do think we should have sort of an asterisk basically saying, as we are invited and as we have the staff that are available to attend the events, it is absolutely our commitment to attend whatever, whatever activities we're invited to. We're actually invited to a lot of activities even out of Napa County that nearby counties will call us and say, oh, would you like to come to our career fair? So it's not, definitely the focus is our, our Napa County schools, but we definitely have invitations that we accept from, from out of county as well. And so, but, but I appreciate the feedback very, very much. And also because I would like to see that we continue to grow this activity calendar, but also maintain that intentionality. There are very specific events that we have on the calendar for strategic reasons. And if there are other events that aren't on there yet that should be, this would be an opportunity either to share it with us now or to share that with Dr. G or share it with me. And we will make sure we get that on our calendar because we are really looking at ways to, and, and, and there are other things that we're, that are in the works too, that I know Dr. G is working on. I don't know if you want to talk about some of the other things that you're looking at in terms of going into the communities and connecting. But it hasn't made its way here yet because we, we are still strategizing which specific activities and spaces. But we are absolutely moving in that, in that direction. So the plan is to have at least 25 prospective student contacts from each outreach event. Again, that may change in time when we've determined it should be higher or it should be more reasonable, maybe 10 is plenty. We'll, we'll, we'll keep you posted on that, but we wanted to kind of shoot, shoot high. So the importance of this activity calendar, and I may have addressed this all, but I just want to make sure I'm in, don't miss anything in my presentation. And that is the annual planning of monthly events and activities. So you won't see specific dates on this calendar, but we have those specific dates on our internal calendar. So we know when the, when the dates are. And that's maintained separately on the actual outreach calendar. So the, the, the outreach action plan calendar shows you the scope. And then the actual detail is going to be on the, our just internal outreach calendar that's in outlook. So this is going to be reviewed annually and that we want to determine the effectiveness of each event and each activity. We're going to use data. I don't know if any of you have heard about our, our vision aligned reporting that's going to start in the next year, starting fall '24. But we are going to be doing a lot more tracking of our student activities specifically in specific programs. But I think it's going to be a really great model for us to track a lot of, a lot of our activities. So we can really assess where's our success, where, where are we successful? Where are we not so successful? Where are the gaps in the places and spaces that we're going and where do we need to fill those gaps to make sure we're reaching our underserved students that we need to reach and serve and, 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 and share and invite to Napa Valley College? We also want to add events and activities as new opportunities emerge. So I don't want you to think this is set in stone and there's no room. There's lots of room for growth, development and new opportunities. So there are some next steps and some steps that we've already taken, but they were part of my, of the plan. So I, convening of the outreach action team of the district strategic enrollment SEM committee. So in our last session with our, our outreach action team, part of their role is to define how often they want to meet or need to meet. And again, under the structure of SEM, that is evolving, but we will be convening that team at least monthly, if not more frequently. We would like, and I kind of want to plant this seed here as well, because this has come up many, many, many times in our task force as well as the SEM team, as well as the action team, to designate an outreach event coordinator. Event planning is very time consuming when you do it right. And we, as you all know, we are quite short-staffed and we want it to be done right. Now we do have staff, we are doing an amazing job with the resources we have. But to have a coordinator, to designate a coordinator, to plan and coordinate all of our outreach activity would be, would be wonderful. So we're, we're investigating what that might look like in the future. So I'm not making any specific requests, just sort of planting the seed of having that, that single role would I think be a, a great thing. And again, not necessarily the, the, the planning of which events, but the actual details. So we also will be developing an electronic student prospect tracking system to track and communicate with prospective students in new and unique ways. We will continue to develop our communication plan for applicants to complete the steps to enroll. We already have communication plans, but we're looking to really make some significant improvements in what we are currently doing. Conduct targeted outreach to student populations that will help meet our student, our equity related SEM goals. And then increase awareness for campus, community outreach and recruitment to ensure a coordinated approach. So with that, I know I'm out of time. So I don't know if there's.
Any other questions from the board? Thank you.
On your very last bullet where you said that increasing awareness for camp, for camp, campus community outreach and recruitment to ensure coordinated approach. Just curious, what conversations have you had or do you plan to have with the communications director out of the president's office to make certain that that actually happens?
Great question. And Denise actually sits on the SEM committee as well as she sat on our prior and Holly before her and whoever's in that director, communications director position always is invited to. And depending on their availability, generally will, will be in attendance. So it's very important that we have a very close connection with, with our communications department. And so they were also, again, I say they being all those people in that role. They've been involved in our outreach task forces in the, our task force in the past as well because of the importance of the community, the timeliness too of our communications that go out about our participation in activities. Because really students, where we understand students are, is social media and we, and we are really looking for ways to reach out to our, our community at large. And then the targeted communications, those are, those are much easier to manage. But the, the bigger picture, we definitely have Denise part of that.
Trustee Baker, we, we actually work to include language, incorporate some of the outreach tasks and responsibilities in the new job description for the new director position as well, to formally codify that as a component of their job. While they don't have direct oversight of the staff, the coordination piece, formally codifying that was something that we did in this most recent job announcement.
I was about to echo how important that is and how, how strategic it was to put that into that, into that PIO position. So really aligning the two spaces is, is part of the work we're doing.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Erickson.
Hi, can I, sorry, can I say something really?
Trustee Delana.
I just wanted to mention that the CCLC has a targeted campaign for advertising to dual, dual enrollment students in high schools. So I've already given them our, or my contact information, but they have advertising dollars to help with outreach, also to the high schools for that and help with more enrollment and helping us get our enrollment numbers up through dual enrollment.
Fantastic. And our, our enrollment numbers are definitely going up in, 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 I mean, in terms of the relative numbers in our, in our enrollment statistics. Yeah. Thank you so much.
One of the final things I'd like to say is that, you know, we really are working hard to align our plans together. So you'll, you'll notice lots of connections back to SEM, to DEI. Cause it's the work that we're all doing. So making sure we're, we're, we're working together collaboratively, but also our funding sources. So that we really do braid our funding sources to offer support to the community a much more thoughtful way around how to do this, this, this thing we call outreach and how even identifying what outreach means for Napa Valley College, breaking that down is, is part of this, this step forward. So this is the first, I think, time we've actually had an action plan or outreach plan for Napa Valley College. So this will grow. Our, our goal is to grow this over time and turn this into a publication we can have available to our community. So we all know exactly what's happening when it comes to outreach. So this is that, that step towards that in that direction.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Move to another presentation, 11.1, Transportation, Distribution and Logistics Workforce Training. TDL as the insiders like to call it.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. I'm Doug Marriott. I'm the Senior Dean of Career Education and Workforce Development. And I recently got to present on the work of our career education areas and was asked to follow up with a presentation on TDL in detail. I'm really grateful to have Letizia Narango, who is here with us, representative of classified staff and does an incredible job with outreach. I'm happy to follow Dean Erickson because the work is already being done. And to codify it and put it in plans is, is great, but to be able to highlight specific examples, I think is important. And tonight we get to share some human stories from TDL. I don't know if you could scroll up, please. So I really believe this is a workforce bridge. When we reach out to adults who want to upskill and get skills, I'm grateful that this is now part of our strategic enrollment management. I think it's representative of the need of a community college to reach out to communities of nonprofits, communities of employers and adults who want to upskill. And we need to have vehicles for them to do so. This is a short-term training that was developed in partnership with the West Oakland Job Center through funding from a workforce accelerator grant 9.0. Many people on this campus have worked on this and I would acknowledge Dr. Sherry Tennyson for her help and support. And everybody in the office that I get to work with. Due to the success of the first iteration, there's been three more funding sources that we've been written into with the West Oakland Job Center. So there's funding through 2025 to continue this work and it's expanding. It does address transportation, distribution and logistics, but that these are supply chain jobs throughout the North Bay. You can see here there, it's very short-term. I always think if, if I was out of work and went and saw somebody at a community college and they said, yeah, if you're here for two and a half years, you may, may get the certificate and you may or may not get a job, I wouldn't show up. But if somebody said in, in a short term, we can get you this and this hands-on training and introduce you to partners and align with enrollment and employment, I would do it. So that's, that's kind of this model. And in a short period of time, people get their CDL class A and B permit preparation, OSHA 10 safety training, forklift and warehouse training that is done right in our winery, which is appropriate. Many of our VWT students have taken this as a value add on to bring these skills into that industry. And it leads either into a three to five week apprenticeship training with Teamsters and other training entities. And there's ongoing support through our partners at Career Point, which are part of the North Bay Workforce Alliance and our partners at the West Oakland Job Center. I think if you go to the next slide, this is what I really wanted to share and I hope I didn't talk too long. I want to give the stage to Letizia Narango.
What have not you? I am honored to be here. I'm honored to be part of the TDL team who coordinates this amazing program. What you're looking at the slide is employers who have employed our participants, our graduates. They're employed in Pepsi, Gelati, Costco. We've had agencies who have sent us their employees to train on the forklift and receive promotions. We've had people in the United States Postal Service in other areas. If you go to the next slide. Pictured here are a lot of success stories. If you're looking at the PowerPoint, top left, we have Victor who's wearing a blue mask. Cameron, and that's one of our Teamsters trainers. He trains on the forklift, two at a time. He's also a Teamsters instructor. Teamsters is, is instructs all the curriculum and they train. So they're keeping on a, or they're assessing all of our students from day one. But Victor who's, who's masked, he's a veteran. He's someone who was underemployed, signed up, very first participant, very first Napa Valley College cohort. Went through the training, got it certified in forklift, OSHA 10. Applied to the Teamsters apprenticeship program, spent about five weeks. Graduated, was immediately picked up by Pepsi. So now he's employed in Pepsi. What he was looking for was stable employment, retirement, benefits. And he got that to TDL in, in a short amount of time. To the right, we have pictured Davion and opposite of Davion is Carlos. Um, in the center is, um, another participant. Um, but Davion is a recent graduate from Michael Transportation Service. He came to Naperville College, um, having lost his job. He was really, really on fast track to get employed. Finished our program, went to Michael Transportation. I believe he spent four weeks there. And I want to say maybe a week or two later, um, got employed by, um, let me see, it's RL. I had it just now. RL carriers. So now he's, he's employed and working. Carlos, uh, also he was in, um, the wine industry for seventeen years. He was laid off. Started our program, uh, was a little nervous because there was a language barrier. However, we worked with him. He is now a student of Michael Transportation and he should be graduating in three to four weeks. That's another success story. There are so many more. I don't have a picture of, uh, one of our other students. Ms. Navarro. She, I believe, wanted just forklift. Was so motivated by the, uh, trucking opportunities. Applied and was accepted in Michael Transportation, graduated, and now she's a team driver with her partner. They, they have their own business and that's what she's doing. There's many more, um, but I think we might be out of time.
Thank you, Letizia. I think it's important to note that Letizia is a social worker. And to be a social worker, she's able to connect a lot of the resources with the community, with the individuals that we get to serve. She also has experience in student services, which is important. I still have a goal of hiring a career head counselor. And that would be ideal because then a counselor would meet with these individuals and help onboard them if they choose a different pathway with us. And the work Chantel Rigel's doing with adult education non credit translates into this will have short term non credit certificates that we can overlay with career education. Titles include employability, their employability skills, but, um, communication for the workplace, anti racism for the workplace. I think these are important bridges for our adult partners. I got to meet with the principal of the adult school today about how our alignment works. And I think this is a great example of it. So I thank you for your time and I thank the team that I get to work with.
Thank you, Mr. Marriott. And thank you, Ms. Narango. Any questions or comments from the board?
I'm a recent graduate of the program.
Yeah, I was waiting for that shout out.
I wanted to learn to drive the forklift and I did. And I appreciate the program. I appreciate you, Doug, and Letizia did a, an excellent job as a facilitator.
Very proud to have you. Thank you very much.
We're so proud to have a TDL graduate on the board.
Thank you very much, Eva. We'll move to eleven point two, uh, C cap agreements and amendment.
Yes, good evening. Um, it is not a requirement for us to bring amended, uh, C cap agreements to the board, but it is a best practice to make sure that the board and the public is aware of any changes to previously approved agreements. There are three primary changes here. Um, some textbook information has been corrected and additional textbooks listed. But I think the most important thing to highlight is some additional classes that have been added. So our C cap, uh, program is ever growing and dual enrollment is definitely a critical part of, uh, the work that we are doing. And I want to acknowledge Christine Tapia in particular for her leadership around that. Let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you very much, Dr. Mora. Any questions?
Thank you to Ms. Tapia too. Appreciate that update. Uh, item twelve point one, an action item.
Roofing contract, any comments or questions? Catherine, do you have any public comment on this action item?
Uh, no.
Seeing none, I would welcome.
Is this is the roofer, right?
Yes.
Yeah. So I, I did have a question. Um, I looked at the companies that we solicited bids from, and I see that Garland is based in Ohio. And we solicited bids from a San Francisco company and a Richmond company. And I'm wondering why I don't see any bids solicited from local companies. I'd really like to see us, you know, investing in our own community.
Uh, acknowledged and agreed. These are, um, Garland is the manufacturer of a synthetic roof product. That's used in, in, uh, many community colleges and lots of commercial applications. So, um, the, uh, the technical support, the technical ability to address those vinyl roof systems, doesn't land in every single community. They're, they're rather thinly spread, but I think, uh, uh, trust Nickishna, we, we will look for, uh, local vendors here. But it's a fair, fairly specialized application of roofing materials. And I think that dictates to some extent who can do that work.
I see, I see. Thank you.
Good question. Any other questions or comments? Might welcome a motion for approval.
No approval.
Thank you, trustee Rios and trustee Baker, all in favor.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm abstaining from this one.
Okay. Uh, any opposed? Abstentions, trustee Kishanef?
Yeah, that's me. I'm abstaining.
Six trustees in favor with trustee Kishanef abstaining. We'll move to what is now twelve point two, uh, general fund eleven update.
Thank you, President Doug. This is, uh, uh, the monthly update, uh, to fund eleven, the unrestricted general fund. And let me just first acknowledge that I'm handicapped by the fact that trustee Olson isn't here to help present this. And so I may stumble a bit, so bear with me. Let me provide a correction to begin the conversation. At the October presentation of this budget, we, we, there was an oversight in which we didn't replace the tentative budget with a final budget, which is column F, column F. Thank you. So some of the variances were, were inaccurately reported. Uh, they are not significant or material, but I just wanted to point that out. This budget report represents the budget you adopted in September. So I've replaced column F from that tentative budget to the final budget. So that gives, that, that gives you a more accurate, um, sense of what the board agreed to and how we're managing against that. The, the, the changes where we had a, a slight increase in revenues at, at the final budget. And we had a slight increase in some of our expenses. But, uh, you'll notice here, um, that, that was not significant. But I did want to point out the fact that, that the numbers in that board approved column have changed from what we inadvertently kept in as a tentative budget. And now it is the permanent budget or the final budget that you approved. So if we look to, uh, again, we're at, um, three twelfths of the budget. Or about twenty, four twelfths of the budget or about thirty-three percent of, of the, of the year. And so the general guidance, uh, if you look at the right hand column, uh, we should be generally around the thirty-three percent, uh, expenditure range. Just a reminder that our revenues don't track the same way because they're based largely on property tax revenues. And those usually come in two, generally two large clumps. When we all pay our property taxes, we get them December and typically, or in January after December payment. And typically, um, later in, uh, in, uh, in June. We do get some trickling in from some other sources, but you recall from last year, we, we tracked behind for several months. And then we finally caught up frankly toward the end. In terms of expenditures, our, our, um, our one thousands, which are salaries, um, are tracking. Hey, it's kind of hard to get it all on one screen. Are tracking at about twenty-nine percent. Uh, so against thirty-three percent, we're tracking pretty well. I will add that, that any retroactive payments that, uh, were placed because of board approval timing are in place with the exception of one group, and that's the, um, confidential, uh, and administrative group has not been applied to the budget yet. Benefits are tracking right at thirty-two percent and no particular concerns there. Total books and supplies is tracking at about thirty-three point seven four percent. Again, no particular concerns there. Our total operating, um, excuse me, supplies line forty-two is tracking at about thirty-six percent. So we're a tad over. I think we can usually attribute that to, to some timing issues, but certainly haven't raised a particular concern. I will bring to light a question that trustee Baker had last meeting about what's included in rentals and why is that flying so high? There's, there's a gasp of change in how, in what we call rentals. And they aren't, they aren't just party tents anymore. They are software, largely software, um, purchases or, or the use of software for subscriptions a, a year at a time. And so we needed to reflect those there. There's a little bit of a, a reclass there. In addition, we purchased or we rented, if you will, some, um, some software from AMS Net that was, um, that was, uh, security focused. We're looking at that again and see, seeing if we need to continue that. But that was purchased in response to the cyber attack last year. That gave rise to that expense as well. And we also had, uh, some, some software expenses that seemed to increase our, our creative cloud expenses. It's up an additional forty thousand dollars there. So, um, trustee Baker, it is not chairs and tables anymore. It is largely software.
I guess just a, a quick note on that, we had, of course, the same thing that happened with, uh, city where I work. And we created a new line item called, uh, software, software as service, uh, specifically to track that separately. Might be worth doing.
Thank you for pointing that out. Total expenditures are tracking at about thirty-one percent, which is line forty-eight. Again, we're tracking below where we typically would be, um, um, for, uh, for this time of year. And in fact, we're tracking at about a million two less than the same time last year. So our prior, excuse me, a million two more than the same time last year, but that's attributed to, uh, increased salaries and benefits. So, but at thirty-one percent of our adopted budget, we're in pretty decent shape. Let me just point out one more thing here. And that is, you'll notice under the board approved budget, the very bottom figure, thanks, moving on, very, thank you, Catherine. Very bottom figures is our, our reserve, our fund balance or our reserves are at thirteen point four nine percent. That was the number we reported to you in the budget that you adopted in September. Subsequent to that time, we are, have closed our financials and that number has actually increased to just over fifteen percent. So I wanted to make sure that we're transparent enough so that you, you could see this is exactly what you adopted. However, when the, when the budget, excuse me, when the audit is completed, I will want to adjust that projection to what we're, we think we're going to realize in the fifteen plus percentage range. So unless there are further questions, that would conclude my report.
Nine thirty-seven.
Election or board elections, that's the costs associated with board elections. Uh, yes, yes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reeves. We will go to item thirteen point one, which is an information item, a first reading of, uh, board policies. Any comments or questions? From the board? Seeing none, we will go to thirteen point two, which is an action item. This is a, a second reading, a repeal of the old, uh, board policy manual. Any comments or questions from the board on this item? Yep.
I, uh, I emailed all of you, but it was late in the day. So we did make a change to the posted document. And the changes are shown here in yellow highlighting. We removed the eleven forty from the list, so that, that will not be repealed until we complete the AP twenty-five ten participation and local, uh, decision making. And then, uh, we've added this, uh, BP sixty-seven forty, you're actually doing a first reading of it tonight. And that will come back to you, not in January, but in December. Uh, and then the, the other item was just a typo, a wrong number.
Understood. Thank you very much, Catherine. Any public comment on this item, action item?
I have none.
Good. Approval of the posted changes.
Thank you, trustee Erickson for your motion. And trustee Kishanef, thank you very much for your second, all in favor.
Um, excuse me, what, what you're doing tonight is you're doing, uh, you're adopting this resolution that repeals the documents listed in the list.
Okay. So trustee, actually, what'd you do?
I made your motion to reflect the, yes, the resolution as, uh, shown in the, uh, the red lines.
Yes.
Trustee Kishanef.
I second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed?
None, exceptions, no.
It is repealed, Catherine.
Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine, for the eye for detail. And move on to our, our reports. Is Priya here? She, I didn't see anything posted.
Priya is not here. We have two in the room and Christine Tapia is coming in.
Okay.
Can you see, and, uh, Dr. Kronzer is here too.
Great. Well, let's do our classified Senate report. Ms. Danielle Alexander.
All right. Um, this is on because it's green. Okay. Good evening, everybody. This Thanksgiving time of year has directed my mind to think of this month's report in terms of what I'm grateful for, for the classified Senate at NBC and for our school in general. Many things come to mind. I'm really proud of and grateful for the improved communication that we are all engaged in. Dr. Powell's leadership has made an enormous difference in this, and I think all of our communication with each other will continue to improve over the next many years. The dedication and focus of all of us on shared governance through the district committee structure, where all of the constituent groups are working together at the same time, has been uplifting and inspiring to members of the classified Senate. We feel like the good work that we are all doing for our student body is rooted in right action and dedication to their education. Also uplifting is the creation of the shared governance handbook, which we have needed for many more years than any of us can count. Through Dr. Mora's efforts, we have a really solid document. And with years in time, this document will continue to be improved upon where necessary and will help all of the people who work at NBC now and in the future. It's really good stuff and much, much needed. Um, our group is also particularly grateful for the discussions that we are having together at the president's extended cabinet meetings. When I became the president of the Senate, many people at Senate meetings voiced their wish that something like this could exist. And here we are engaged in the sharing of information and knowledge. It's helpful to everybody. And again, it is rooted in right action. We are educators and it makes all of us proud to work together as a team. We're looking forward to many things that our college leaders have been working on coming to fruition in the coming months, like the aforementioned shared governance handbook, the educational master plan, the mission goals, vision and value statement, continued work on accreditation, creating changes needed directed by the campus climate surveys and the efforts of the AP revisions work groups. Um, when I started in this position in early twenty twenty-two, none of the things that I just mentioned were in the consciousness of the classified Senate membership. We were uninformed, we were not communicated with, and as one member said recently, we were nearly invisible. We weren't seen as mattering and we didn't show up like we mattered. Speaking for myself as a person who endorses this school, I will end by saying that I am grateful for all of the positive changes and improvements. I will end by saying that I am grateful for all of the positive changes and improvements that have come to pass in a relatively short period of time. Embracing each other's ideas and being willing to communicate, share, and try things out with an open mind. I think these are gifts that we can give to each other and to our student body. This concludes my Thanksgiving report.
Thank you. Just in here.
Good evening. For my report today, I'd like to highlight my classified colleagues, to all that wanted to join us this evening and could not, to all those present today and all who are with us via Zoom. It has been far too long since we've had a representation internally. That changed in July. We're committed to making sure that our voices are heard. I want to express my gratitude to you all for welcoming us into this space and to Charo and Dr. Powell and Dr. Guerrero for keeping an open door for us. The work we do is invaluable and shapes this institution in so many ways, from trimming trees to answering phone calls, from reconciling student records to emptying trash cans, tutoring students to registering them for classes and everything in between. We're dedicated and committed to students and this institution. You can see heart in the work that we produce. As you have heard in public comment, you have been heavily impacted at the classified level. We trust the district to bargain in good faith and at the outcome of negotiations fully represent the commitment of the district to classified professionals at Napa Valley College. This concludes my report.
Thank you. Ms. Tapia.
Hi, good evening, President Dodd, members of the board, cabinet, and campus community. So I'm going to pick up on the trend that Ms. Alexander started, and I am going to use my time tonight to talk about gratitude. So November, as always, is a busy time in the semester for everyone at Napa Valley College. And administrators are no exception to that. So this time for us means submissions, deadlines, tying loose ends before we head into a short but much needed break. And I want to encourage you to use that break wisely. I also want to take this time to express my gratitude for my fellow administrators, some of which are in the room with you tonight and some tuning in virtually via Zoom, who continuously exhibit forward-thinking leadership and innovation and in collaboration with faculty and staff so that our institution can can move on key milestones. And you see some of these milestones on tonight's agenda, such as the recruitment and hiring of key positions, academic and community partnerships, institutional mission, vision, and values, which is a big win for us, outreach efforts, policy work, just to name a few. And I am equally grateful for a small but very mighty subset of our team, and that is our confidential staff, as their commitment to excellence often occurs behind the scenes. So the diligent efforts of Annabella, Danielle, Jennifer, Noreen, and Savannah in HR, Donal in payroll, Martha in student affairs, Noemi in academic affairs, Solange in administrative services, and Kathy in the president's office ensure the seamless functioning of critical processes and maintaining the integrity of our operations. In recognition of their work yesterday at our Administrative Senate meeting, we unanimously voted to formally rename the group to the Administrative slash Confidential Senate. And we will make efforts to ensure that this new name is reflected in all institutional documents bearing it. And lastly, I am appreciative, as always, of the time and the privilege to speak tonight on behalf of my colleagues. I wish you all a wonderful Thanksgiving break, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Christine, likewise. Sorry. Do you have some makeup? Yeah, sure.
Didn't see him.
Good, good. Our Academic Senate report, Dr. Kronzer.
Hello, thank you. Today, I want to highlight the work of the Academic Senate. I want to first start by acknowledging that we've been diligently working to review and update over thirty policies. At our most recent meeting, the Academic Senate recommended twenty-four policies to move forward for the collegial consultation process. And I want to thank my faculty college for taking that undertaking and the work that went into making that possible. We also recently reviewed and endorsed a sabbatical that we hope you will later approve at your next meeting. We approved an initial draft of our spring twenty twenty-four Flex Day, which we believe reflects a multiconstituent focus, and we look forward to further developing and planning that and implementing it. We also reviewed and updated the bylaws of our Distance Education and Technology Committee through a second reading. We think it'll be a better reflection of the work that committee does and make sure that we are making effective recommendations on technology use for the campus. I'd also like to take a moment to acknowledge that the faculty engage in data collection to discuss the scheduling of our campus in future semesters and the function of college hour. The majority of faculty expressed a desire to sustain our college hour and keep it as a practice. And we look forward to communicating this desire and examining how we can better serve students as we plan our future schedules. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kronzer. Is Christine, okay, then we will go on to our president and cabinet reports, Dr. Powell.
Dr. Moore.
So as Jessica Erickson mentioned, our enrollments are still showing that we are up. These numbers that you see reflect pretty accurately what our ending numbers will be since our last late start classes have already commenced. So you can see the comparison between this semester, fall twenty twenty-three, relative to fall twenty twenty-two. There were, there are ten thousand eight hundred fifty-three enrollments this fall compared to nine thousand nine hundred and forty-nine. And Catherine, would you possibly be able to scooch the screen a little bit over to show the percentage difference that's in the right-hand column? Thank you so much. The headcounts are very relevant when you look at the two compared to each other because you'll you will notice that in fall twenty twenty-two, our headcount was four thousand two hundred and seventeen, and this fall, four thousand four hundred and fifty-two. This is not as marked a difference in the number of students as in enrollments. And that is relatively speaking positive because that means more of our students are taking more classes, which means they're making progress toward their educational goals at a faster pace. So that's a good thing. You'll also notice for our non-credit, kind of the opposite thing, and I wouldn't call this a trend per se. When we look at the non-credit enrollments, all of our classes are about the same as they were last fall, except for one, which is a supervised writing course. And many of our English students take a corequisite class in support. That's something that was implemented post AB seven oh five as an alternative. So it's only in one class that accounts for that difference, and and the numbers are small. So when they're that small, it looks bigger, if you will, in the percentage comparison. Then looking ahead to spring twenty twenty-four, priority registration began on November seventh. We have just a few enrollments across different classes, so everything is wide open at the moment. And we will be providing updates on our actual enrollments and if we need to make adjustments to those courses as needed. And then, as you've heard, we've been actively engaged in the Educational Master Plan process. And looking at all of those boxes, we're now in that middle row with the first box of campus input sessions. Those are concluding this week. And the next stage will be the draft development. If you look at the sentence at the very bottom, this week has been very busy for gathering that information directly from our various constituencies. We had three student focus groups this week, a faculty focus group, a staff administrator focus group, and two community input sessions. So many excellent ideas and contributions. And I want to acknowledge last night, in this very room, we had five members from Napa Valley Unified School District, two community directors of local nonprofits, two community members, three faculty, two staff, and maybe there was someone else there. It was just an amazing group of people representing many different viewpoints. And that's the kind of feedback and input that will really help inform this process and help us to form the vision for the next five years. So I'll have another update for you next time, but the EMP is well underway in terms of data gathering, conversation, and dialogue. Thank you.
Good evening, community. Good evening, board. I wanted to start off first by acknowledging that we are in a month of Thanksgiving, being that we are in November, but we also celebrate National Native American History Month. So I want to acknowledge that. Also want to acknowledge our classified professionals. Thank you for all the work that you do. We had an amazing, amazing high school breakfast today, and it really is the support of of folks who are on the front lines helping us out, especially our classified professionals. So I wanted I wanted to thank you for all the work that you all do. But with that, I want to talk a little bit about today's event and the high school breakfast that we had, our eighteen eighteenth annual, trustee Baker, thank you for for being there. We had over a hundred people, a hundred and fifteen people actually show up today to our event. And it was well attended by community members. We had, I have a list here of all the schools that attended. You can see the different school districts that were present, all of our local schools were were there with some community partners as well. The theme this year of our of our event was engage, empower, and drive. Right? So when we think about the work that we do on Napa Valley College and student affairs, mainly specifically around how we engage our our students, how we empower them to ultimately that they thrive. So we're very excited about the event. You can see the topics that are covered today. We have a variety of topics from Riverdale Village, counseling support, our equity programs, international education. Some are broad programs, our welding, dual enrollment, financial aid. I'm just the opportunity to collaborate and to be a community with our with our partners was was a was a powerful event. And I always enjoy it. There's really good food. So we're getting really good feedback from community members as to how the the event went. You can scroll down. Also want to to celebrate that NASA, Math, Engineer, and Science and Achievement is now part of Educational Gulf of California because of SB four four four, which basically the governor signed October thirteenth, which makes NASA part of. It's here. It's it's going to be here for for many more years in our community colleges. So when I acknowledge that, lift that up, it's a timeless celebration for for NASA, for all of our students who are heading down the STEM path. I also want to acknowledge that we participated in Napa Valley College, the SIHS and STEM programs in the SACNAS, which is Society for Advancement of Chicano and Hispanic Native Americans in Science Conference in Portland, Oregon. So you'll see that it happened in October. This and really the the goal of SACNAS is to provide an exciting and culturally relevant science conference for community college students, university undergraduates and graduates, and in fact, to cross the country, present their research, and build community with other sciences. We had thirty-nine NBC students attend that activity with three of our staff, our qualified staff, and faculty members. So again, this is another opportunity for our students to really to really experience a conference, a professional conference at a very high level, and also just engage, collaborate with, again, scientists across the nation. It was very exciting. We'll see a student testimonial there at the bottom. I want to read this. As a chemical engineer major at a community college, I often don't get to meet people within the field. At the SACNAS conference, I met two chemical engineers, first time along with other chemists. Although they were at graduate level, I was exposed to opportunities and advice I'd never received if I hadn't gone to the conference. SACNAS opened a door of opportunities that were all their way to dissolve Argus, NBC, NASA, and chemistry club president. So when I lift up those words in honor of her testimonial. And finally, the NASA STEM program likes to thank my soft work now for supporting or travel to the conference. So one last announcement. If you are interested in coming to watch me make a big debut in a play, yes, I am a play. December first, February third, we go ahead and pass out some flyers here. They're in English and in Spanish. Unabida maravillosa. It's a wonderful life. And it's all in Spanish with English subtitles. Please come out. It's going to be in the pack. Great event. Take flyers, dispose them up, and come, come watch me try to be there. So thank you very much. Includes my report.
The baton has been passed. My report, I'll try to keep brief. An update on the twenty-two twenty-three budget and audit. The audit is 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 closing in on a final draft. We anticipate that to be presented to the to the Audit and Finance Committee on about, I think, December eleventh, if I'm not mistaken. Yes, December eleventh. And it will be presented to the full board for consideration on December fourteenth. The twenty-three twenty-four budget, I noted earlier, the the oversight of the of including the tentative budget instead of the final budget. I think we've covered that there. Institutional technology, we are moving briskly into areas that we have, we should have been looking at years ago. We're seeing good progress from the team there. Just a few areas to report. The the IT team made a report to the cabinet, an extended cabinet, about just a very brief progress report from what they've been doing in October. And we anticipate bringing a fuller report to the cabinet and to the Board of Trustees in the early part of twenty-four to give you a sense of how we're doing and what we're doing there. The management, the management team has identified a permanent chief information officer. We had a candidate on campus, it seems to be two or three weeks ago, who met with several folks on campus and and determined that he had the tactical tactical expertise and ability to to lead our effort here on campus. So we anticipate he will be here early December. So we're looking forward to to that. The plan to push the enterprise systems, the cloud is underway. Our go-live is scheduled around spring of twenty-four. The going to the cloud provides additional security measures for our enterprise systems and and provides additional assurances that we can avoid the cyber attack that we've experienced before. Student housing update. The Riverdale Trail Village Information Office opened in grand fashion on November first. Some of you were there. Thank you to the members of the board who were there. Thank you to Dr. Powell for his his opening remarks. I think after that, lots of students jumped up and went and made application for housing. They also made application because they see what's going on over there. It's a very attractive site. And certainly now, students are are beginning to see themselves as part of a program like that. So that's all very good. Some numbers about how we're doing, we're about ten months out of occupancy or move-in, if you will. In a report, November seventh, there were twenty-one approved applications for housing. A hundred and three applications had begun, this was a week ago, and several inquiries in the follow-up queue. In addition, the single rooms are said to be sold out with the furnished studios going quickly. So a good start, we will want to keep an eye on those so that we can monitor how we're doing and increase our efforts at at outreach, not only for for the housing, but more importantly, for programs here at the college. Outstanding issues in our housing program continue to be, how do we support students with food insecurities in our housing program? We're working on white paper that outlines the challenge and perhaps some solutions there as well. So that's that's in the queue. We're also looking at what wraparound services that students will require, will need as as we have a population on campus that's will be part of a residential twenty-four seven residential experience. Our Wine Education Center, I think you may be aware, has TSA approval in hand. And as you saw earlier on the consent agenda, we have retained, we we will soon retain the the services of the construction manager who will provide oversight on and be a liaison with the institution relative to that project. I I want to reiterate that the contract has not been signed yet. However, there's a conditional approval that we that both parties meet, have agreeable terms on terms on terms and conditions before we sign off. But we have identified that firm. It is the Kitchell Firm, a large construction management firm. We're we're looking forward to working with them. The facilities area, the Ash landfill, seems to be a recurring theme. We we are continuing to work through this. The county has agreed to a course of action here. And we are, we are beginning the the field work to determine what the parameters, what the parameters of the actual landfill are, how far they've reached. And so Uh, and so, uh, as part of that field work, um, our, our consultant Langen has requested, uh, made a proposal for additional services of about eighty, at the cost of about eighty three thousand dollars. So, uh, that process continues, and that's all in an effort to make sure we have an interim litigation plan in place that clears the way for any hurdles about opening our residential site. Um, there may be some posts kind of worked for a permanent closure, but I will keep you up, keep you updated in how that proceeds. I would, um, I would finish with, um, uh, uh, some promising news about retaining the services of a new director of facilities. I've been acting in that role for a couple of weeks now and, and looking forward to, uh, being, bringing a recommendation to the Board of Trustees at the December meeting for a new director of facilities here on site. And that would conclude my report.
Uh, good evening, board. Um, so last month, we resumed our regular accreditation updates to you. Um, and so last month's update was attached to the president's report in, uh, the October agenda. Uh, this slide, you might, you might recognize it, it was drawn from Dr. Webb's presentation to all, uh, back in July, when she came and gave training and information, um, to the board. Um, so this, uh, reflects the, uh, framework for reflec- reflection and improvement that the ACCJC has developed. And I, um, started this as kind of the title page, um, because I thought it was appropriate to emphasize that steps one and two apply particularly well to the follow-up report. So where we will answer, what did you do and what was the outcome in particular? Uh, next slide, please. Uh, let's see, so, um, the requirements of a follow-up report, um, the artwork that has the blue highlight that says follow-up report is drawn from the ACCJC's new accreditation handbook, which combines information from multiple former ACCJC handbooks, uh, into one central location. That's been a, a new pro, a new development, uh, just this year. Um, so the requirements of a follow-up report are described here on that second bullet. So it says that the follow-up report should provide narrative and evidence documenting how the institution has addressed compliance requirements and aligned with the standards. So again, um, hearken back to that graphic that Dr. Webb shared with us, what did you do and what was the outcome? Um, and in addition, how does it align with the standards and how we institutionalize the practices that we've, um, implemented, uh, since receiving the action letter from the ACCJC. Uh, the, uh, the follow-up report is structured as a letter from the college president, Dr. Powell, to, directly to the commission. And so it is our opportunity to speak directly to the commission regarding the core, the college requirements that they, um, identify for us. There are six college requirements that were identified in the action letter that we received back in January. Um, those six, uh, requirements are, were included in the report from last month. And they're also, that's a hot link to the, uh, action letter on the website that you can explore at, at your ple- pleasure. Let's see, so finally, um, uh, last month's, uh, report included the timeline that's on the left. And, um, so what is new about the slide is the, the information that's over on the right, and that's meant to show, um, some expansion of the activities that we had originally planned, um, for, um, leading up to December. And so what I want to emphasize here is that review by the campus community, um, in the general ti- uh, timeline, um, was originally scheduled for January, and we've already begun drafting the report and sharing it with campus constituencies. Um, so as noted on, on the right side of the, uh, slide, the preliminary draft responses of, to four of the six college requirements have been shared with extended cabinet and distributed to the, uh, the campus community via email, and those dates are noted in the table. Um, so the extended cabinet reviewed the responses to college requirements one and six in September. Uh, last month, in October, they reviewed the response, the preliminary drafts of responses to, uh, college requirements three and four. And then later this month, uh, we anticipate taking the preliminary drafts of the requirements, uh, two and five, the two remaining ones, um, to them. So that's, that's planned for later, uh, this month. So then, um, the, we will return to the regularly scheduled program over on the left side, uh, in terms of having the complete draft available for the campus community, um, in mid to late January. Uh, the final thing that I want to emphasize on this slide is the note in the far, in the bottom right-hand corner, where, uh, we do anticipate that Dr. Powell will send the complete draft of the follow-up report, uh, draft as it stands in, uh, early December is when that's anticipated. And I'm happy to answer any questions. Okay, that concludes that, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Warhol. Um, I'll keep my updates brief. Uh, I had the chance this past week to attend, uh, the Hurdy West Board Retreat. And Hurdy is the Higher Education Research and Development Institute. It's a, a national think tank that has opened up a West Coast branch or affiliate, if you will. Um, and was honored to be invited to serve on this board. Uh, essentially what we do is, is we work in collaboration with industry professionals that provide software and, and, and other support services for higher education, most specifically community colleges. And so we, we spent really two and a half days meeting with, uh, vendors to explain to them from the colleges' perspective, what's working well and what's not working quite so well. And it's an incredibly value, valuable experience, good chance to really, I think, leverage, uh, you know, from my own personal perspective, better understanding of some of the tools that we even have here on campus, learn a little more and also to potentially, you know, pilot or, or, or get an idea of what other resources are out there, uh, ways that we can really use technology more effectively to help us address some of the, the gaps we still have, things that folks have been speaking about even here tonight, um, in terms of, you know, resources and things they could call on to help make our job absolutely easier. So that was very helpful, um, although I am very tired because that was a late night flight back, uh, from Palm Springs last night, uh, in inclement weather with lightning and, um, yeah, it was a really, really scary flight, so I'm glad to be home. Uh, and then this morning, I had the privilege of, uh, serving on the Economic Outlook Panel, uh, that the Napa Valley, or, or Napa, City of Napa, the, uh, Napa Chamber of Commerce really put on today. Um, really, really good opportunity for us to get in front of our industry partners and just start talking about how we, as a community college, can work in, in really tight collaboration. Um, there were some really, really good comments shared, uh, a lot of good praise coming about the college and just our willingness to be, you know, active community partners, to, to leverage our position as the educational providers in the region, uh, to really help and create opportunities for our students. And, uh, Dr. Marriott, you got a nice shout-out today as well, so appreciate your work and what you do. And that concludes the, uh, president's area reports.
Thank you, Dr. Powell. We'll move on to committee reports. Trustee De Luna, is there anything from DOS? Not sure if you've met, no.
Thank you, I see it. And for Viticulture and Winery Foundation has met.
We met yesterday and, um, Mr. Reeves gave the, uh, the most, uh, exciting part of the, uh, meeting with the, uh, Wine Education Center being approved by the DSA. Other than that, it was a lot of, uh, business, uh, you know, the financials, reviewing financials, working on operating agreement, um, and things of that nature that aren't quite as exciting.
Thank you, trustee Reeves. Audit and Finance doesn't have anything to report, is Audit and Finance meeting soon? December eleventh, okay. Uh, nothing from Real Property, and we can forego McPherson and Dr. Schenk Awards. And the foundation does have, uh, college foundation, just a few. Also, a very wonderful discussion from VP Reeves as part of the, at the college foundation about, uh, student housing. And I think it also fosters some discussion at the foundation to maybe do some fundraising for student grants and subsidies to subsidize, um, uh, student housing costs for, for student housing program to reduce. Um, the cost of those rooms that aren't already subsidized, subsidized by the state grant. And so that, uh, fostered some, some discussion there. Um, they also talked about, uh, like, getting very organized on the capital campaign for phase two of the Wine Education, um, Center, and really doing some very thoughtful targeted, um, work, um, there that's already underway and, and seen through kind of various, uh, um, small little parties. And then also, I think that's also how the, the Karen McNeil and the Hugh Johnson, um, uh, wine discussion, um, that, um, PAC, uh, went, I think, a couple of weeks ago too, kind of was, uh, spearheaded by, as part of that process as well. And then, um, I don't believe an invitation has gone out, but they did mention that November thirtieth, uh, the, the foundation is hosting their annual holiday party. Um, did it go out? Okay, okay. And I went a lot of the date and time. We will go to the future agenda item requests, any future agenda item? Trustee Baker.
Okay, I've been here seven years, so I think it's high time I ask about the library. So, um, I've been noticing that the library is not open in the evenings or on weekends, and that that's something that is particularly concerning since we're looking at having twenty four seven students on campus. And, uh, I know we haven't had a director in the library for some time, and I don't even know, um, what the current staffing levels are, but I, my understanding is that that's part of what's driving the, the limited hours. So I was just hoping that we could get, uh, perhaps a report on where things are now and perhaps what, uh, hopefully some new plans might be.
Yes, we, we are actively working on, um, procuring resources, including staffing for the library now. Um, I'll only, I'll, I'll leave it at that, and Dr. Moore and I, I think, can, can put together an update on, on that process, uh, very shortly, possibly as early as December or January. Absolutely.
Um, yes, so in spring, we're going to be open until seven PM on Tuesday and Wednesday evenings. And during the pandemic, the user utilization rate was very low. Um, so the spring will be a test to see how many people are actually use, uh, using the library during those hours. And we'll, we'll use that data to look at what our extended hours might be for fall.
Just give me serious deja vu about late nights at the, at the library right now. Yeah. And any other agenda item request? And, um, I think we're trustee Olson, trustee Luna, okay. We'll do, uh, trustee in board chair reports. Uh, perhaps we'll move to our remote trustees, if that's okay, trustee Luna, trustee Olson, whoever would like to go, uh, first, if at all?
I'll go, I'll go first because my battery's about to die, so I, hopefully I'll get a report in before that. Um, well, we're having a great and informative time here in Palm Springs and Indian Wells, to be exact. And it's just, uh, amazing to see all the great work that's happening in, um, colleges around the, the state. And I'm hoping that we'll bring back a bigger, longer report for all of you, um, next month.
Right. Thank you, trustee Luna.
Uh, yeah, and I was just, uh, just a little follow-up to, um, trustee De Luna. We, um, flew down, a very bumpy flight down as we were kind of coming in on that storm that Dr. Powell was taking off in. Um, and yeah, we're just listening and learning and, uh, and just gathering all the information we can, as tr- as trustee De Luna mentioned, to bring back to, uh, Napa. Um, and also in the spirit of gratitude, I just wanted to say, um, a huge thank you to the faculty and staff, the senators and associations, Dr. Powell and the cabinet, my fellow trustees, and most importantly, the students of Napa Valley College that make up our incredible community. I'm really grateful to be part of, um, part of it. Thank you all.
Thank you, trustee Olson. Trustee Agarson.
I don't have a report this evening. Thank you.
Trustee Kishna.
I'm at the end of my first year as trustee for Area Three. And being Thanksgiving time, I wanted to give thanks to voters of American Canyon, to Catherine for keeping me from looking like an idiot, and to my fellow trustees, president, president's cabinet and all the staff, um, for the warm welcome and warm treatment. Thank you and have a great Thanksgiving.
Thank you, trustee Kishna. Trustee Reeves.
No report.
Um, just a couple of quick things. Uh, first, I really enjoyed getting to go to the high school breakfast this morning. I didn't get to stay, but I did get to eat breakfast with, uh, Andrew Goff, our, uh, former trustee Goff's husband. And, uh, I was surprised at the turnover there, there has been in principals, uh, in VSD since I deported there a couple of years ago, but, uh, it looks like they've got, uh, some good people working there. Uh, and I heard also that the, and I could attest to this as well because, my goodness, the food, wow. Um, but you guys really raised the bar for in VSD, because I think they have passed out like fruit snacks and graham crackers. They have events, so, very good. Um, also, uh, wanted to just share something I got in the mail today. I'm not certain who I would leave this with, but I just got this, uh, the North Wind Quilters Guild is offering two five hundred dollar scholarships to local college, uh, vocational art students who are looking at getting a two to four-year degree in vocational certificates in textiles, design or art. So I will pass this along to somebody. And, uh, nutcracker tickets are on sale, hope you can all come.
Thank you, trustee Baker. Um, I just wanted to say that I was really appreciated the, uh, Classified Associations Report and just the way that that was done, um, today. I just thought like, that is an example of how to do it. Um, and just really thoughtful communication, um, on point, on message. Um, and just the way I was just, it resonated. And so I just wanted to, to, to make that note, because, uh, there's some presentations you see oftentimes where they're trying to make a power from, but it just doesn't get, and that was, I just thought that was an A plus and how to, how to, um, here you had an important message, um, that, that needs to be shared. And what's that? And brown purple is a good color, purple power. And, uh, at a personal level, uh, my wife and I had a, a, a baby girl, Betty Alice Dodd. Uh, she was three weeks old today, so it's super really exciting. And, and so, uh, yeah, just wanted to let everybody know that. For announcement of future meetings, we will be meeting, our next meeting is December fourteenth. Um, and if there is nothing to add, uh, after that, we will adjourn at seven seventeen. Thank you all for being here and have a good evening.